Thank your patience, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:05. We call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Sissin.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovart.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a form, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 11th, 2013 meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Rich?
Second.
Second by Dallas, I believe?
Yes.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. At this time, we'll move into the information section. Dr. Butler? Thank you, Dr. Trey. Our student representative, Eric. Thank you, Eric.
Dr. Butler. Penn Trafford High School has been very active this past month. The Student Union is currently working on our strength fundraiser that's taking place from April 26. The first year in your current whole tournament will occur after school and money will be raised for the children's hospital. The election process for new officers representatives will begin soon. This election is for the 2013-2014 school year. On March 22nd, the Student Union members attended the PASC District 4 Leadership Conference hosted by Fort Cherry. This conference features many guest speakers talk about the importance of leadership and community service. In addition, students attending the conference help the local charitable organization pack first aid kits for people in natural disasters. The Community Action Program is preparing for the 3rd grade Big Buddy Program Thursday, April 25th. Over 500 high school and 3rd grade students will get together at the high school for this final phase of the year-long project. This meeting allows high school buddies to inspire their younger buddy about staying active in the community and living healthy lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions? Very good. Next is Student of the Month, and we will start with Mrs. Gardner.
Okay, and I'm delighted to introduce Hayden Ray. Stand up. Obviously, he's not shy because he is front and center already. Hayden is a 2nd grader in Mrs. Thomas's room at Trafford Elementary. He's the son of Christopher and Briann Ray's Bradford Square in Trafford. He's the oldest of four children. Carter is in kindergarten, and Maddox and Mason are in the double-decker over there. So we have three month old twins. They're beautiful, absolutely, all four boys. They're three months old. He definitely is a wonderful big brother because he helps Carter with his homework. Is that true? Okay, just wanted to make sure. And he helps with the babies. He changes their diapers. They do cry at the same time, pretty much, mostly when it's bath time, he said. They do cry at the same time. Really, Hayden is every teacher's dream student. He sets a constant example for all students with an enthusiastic and positive attitude and superior behavior. He's a leader in group work because he likes to help other people and show, right, the way to do things. He's cooperative, a good citizen, he's courteous, thoughtful, trustworthy, and honest. I think we used every adjective in the dictionary. He always strives to do his very, very best and committed is committed to doing his best. His quality of work always exceeds expectations. It's neat and carefully done. We tell them, "Why?" What's Mom and Dad's rule?
Do it nice or you do it twice.
Do it nice or you do it twice. How about that? He said that they are the good, good, good parents, and one of the best times he ever had was when they were washing the car and Dad was washing the tires and he squirted him with the hose. He makes friends quickly. He's well-liked by his classmates. He's compassionate and thoughtful for his peers. He plays football, soccer, baseball. He attends Cornerstone Ministries where he participates in the bell choir in summer camps. He likes to ride his bike, playing Xbox, and he likes pick-up baseball games with his friends. That's a real kid. We don't hear that all the time, huh? He hopes to be a police officer when he grows up so he can help others, but today, we're kind of wavered. He wants to do, there's a new show coming out called Counting Cars, right? Where he thinks he could make over a car, like a sports car probably, because he really likes learning new things. And what a lucky girl I am to have Hayden as part of our Trafford Elementary School. So congratulations and thank you.
Dr. Trey will be coming around to present you with the certificate.
Hey, Carter, you want to help me? I'm not proposing.
Yeah, I'm not a girl.
Hayden, we're very pleased to have you here. There's so many wonderful things about you. Solid guy in this community, and we very much appreciate what you do, and I'm sure it helps other people, and it passes on to them, and they hopefully will do a lot of the same kind of things that you do. We'll all be better people. So your brother's going to pass this to you. He's going to give you a handshake as good as I would as a big guy. What do you think? You give him a handshake?
Yeah.
Right hand?
Hard.
Good job. Good job, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And we will stay with Trafford, Mrs. Gardner, for the middle school.
And when I said I'm a lucky girl, I really am. Andrew, stand up. Front and center. And if anybody ever wanted, if I could have a third son, Andrew, I'll take him in a minute. He is the teacher's choice from Trafford Middle School. He's the son of John and Lori Wasnuski of Holly Drive in Irwin. He's described by his teachers as tenacious. He enters his classes with a great attitude, contributes daily, and never gives up. He's been through a lot this year. He had shoulder surgery, which took him out of school for a while, but he never missed a beat. He takes responsibility for his work, both in his successes and his failures. He's a pleasure for the teachers to have in class, and he's basically a truly good guy. He's looking at maybe Michigan, Florida State, Florida. He'd really like to play football, but mechanical engineering's on the back burner. He contributes his successes to the closeness of his family and the way that he was raised. Football has always been his passion, and he really hopes to play professionally someday. He follows all sports, right? Football, baseball, basketball, hockey. I'm a little shaky on this next part. His favorite teams are the New England Patriots, the Detroit Red Wings, and the Pittsburgh Pirates. Okay. He enjoys playing Wii and Xbox with his family and friends, and most of the time, he wins. He beats everybody. He likes to build things. He'll think up something to start to make it, and he's very mechanically inclined. What's this beta fish named Flacco about?
Oh, well, I said I would name him after Super Bowl MVP. I was hoping it would be Patriots, but it didn't turn out.
Yeah, that's too bad, yeah. He helps his grandparents, neighbors, which are work around the house. He's very close with his grandparents. He helps them moving furniture, getting things out of their attic, yard work, those kind of things. He likes music, but mostly country, and he is very, very close to all his family members and his grandparents. He enjoys spending time with his papap, and that's what I call my grandpap, papap, too. I talk about sports, war, movies, and he likes playing cards with Grandma. When you talk to Andrew, it's not like you're talking to a 14-year-old. You'd think you're talking to an adult because of his knowledge of so many things, which he attributes this to a characteristic of his grandfather's. He's not ashamed to be seen in public with his family like some kids are. He's very caring. He looks out for others, especially kids smaller than him, and he has a little cousin or two that really adores him. He likes to do nice things for people. He's got a big heart. He's a leader. He helped to motivate the 7th and 8th grade football team. He enjoys playing sports with his sisters and cousins at family functions. Very competitive, though, right? Very competitive. He's a big helper around the house. He's quiet at home, but he's really quite outgoing and funny in school. So he's the youngest of three, but he's like the big brother when it comes to protecting his sisters. So thank you for being quite the young man, and I'm proud to present him to the high school for next year.
He looks like he's in the high school.
Andrew, it's a pleasure to present this on behalf of the board. You have quite a great credentials. I think you'll stand out to me, and you're a kind man, you're a role model in many ways, and you appreciate your values. You're kind of what Mr. Petrusi and I would probably call the old soul, and we do appreciate your respect that you're passing on to other generations and family. That's that special trait that's always found in this day and age. Again, wish you very best.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, for our final Student of the Month, who go to the high school and...
Jacob. Come on up. I have Jacob Bersick. He's a senior at the high school, and he's here because his teacher, Miss Stays, right there, really advocated for him and has been talking to me for a couple of months. We've got to recognize this kid. He's a wonderful kid. He's got a great personality, does a lot of great things, and he's the kind of kid that really needs to be recognized. So that's what we're here for. Jacob, his mom is Shannon Bersick, dad Chris Bersick. He has a brother, Josh, who's in 7th grade at Penn Middle School, and I believe he's with his grandmother here today as well. But Jacob's cooperative, friendly, works well with others. He consciously tries to surround himself with good kids, and one of the teachers told me that, you know, when he's in a setting in the classroom, he tries to find kids that are good and are going to be a positive impact on him and want to do good things in class. So I thought that was a unique quality that he had. He wants to surround himself with good kids. He's never disrespectful. He's always apologetic if he's wrong, which he's never wrong, right? Sometimes. Jake is one of those young men that, you know, after five minutes of conversation, you know what kind of a kind and compassionate young man he is. He has the ability not to pass judgment on anyone, but to find the good in people, which is a unique gift at this age. Jake is unassuming and never brings attention to himself, but rather sits back and soaks up everything around him. He has a passion for learning and truly wants to continue to grow and better himself. Jake has been extremely helpful, additionally, as a tutor in the resource room to help learn support students, so he takes time out of his schedule to go up and help other kids who are struggling academically. That's very admirable. He would give up his daily study hall to assist them. Jake has a gift for writing. He actually attained the 5th highest writing score on the PSSAs in his junior year, placing him at one of the highest scores of this year's senior class, and consequently, one of the best in the county. He is a landscaper after school hours, and he did some work for a teacher. One of my teachers told me that you did outstanding work. I couldn't believe how much that kid worked his butt off and was sweating and was hustling, going back and forth, running around. So good work ethic is hard to find in a young man, so congratulations on that. He loves to take a yard that's a mess and turn it into something beautiful. Next winner hopes to expand his landscaping business into some snow plowing, so hopefully that works for you. It's been a good year this year for you. Jake said one of his favorite hobbies is backyard wrestling. I wasn't sure what that meant, but he gets together with a bunch of his buddies in the backyard, and I guess they just have a wrestle fest. He enjoys backyard wrestling. He came to the high school as a rather unmotivated student, but he's emerging as a focused, goal-oriented graduate who plans on attending college this fall. He plans on attending Westmoreland County Community College and will most likely pursue a degree in writing or English. Jake's come a long way, and no doubt in my mind, he will be very successful whatever he does. So congratulations, Jake.
Jacob, I know you have a good sense of humor, so you're only going to get this reward if you can take me down two times out of three. I've had the privilege to see Jacob periodically over the years, and I can tell you one thing about him. When you see him from 15 yards away, walking through the high school, he has a look about him, and we know people this way, that he exudes empathy. And empathy is where you just, you look at someone and you can tell they're interested in you and they're friendly, and they're someone you could be comfortable around, and you have that skill among all others. And I wish you the best in everything you do in life. You're in a well-position right now, and you're continuing on, and we're very proud of you. Thank you. If the Students of the Month want to come over here, and Dr. Trey will have a little photo shoot with all the Students of the Month. So right over here, Dr. Trey, raise your hand. There you go. Students of the Month, we appreciate your attendance. You're welcome to stay, but we also realize you have a life outside of this meeting, so if you have to leave, don't feel any, it's no problem if you have to leave at this time. Welcome to stay, but no problems if you leave. So thank you very much. This is one of our most favorite times of the meeting, to see some of these great kids that we have at Penn Trafford. It's fun. So thank you again, and thank you for the students. Okay, next on my information, Mr. Cooper. Would you please come forward and tell us a little bit about a student in your athletic training world?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Butler, School Board, administrators. Obviously, we have great kids. You just saw that. And I've had the pleasure of working with this young man for the last two years. He's just an asset to the entire school district. He is involved at so many different levels, in the nurses' office, in the drama guild, helping with lifeguarding, teaching CPR, as a student athletic trainer aide. And he is, I'm very happy to say, he's pursuing a career in athletic training. He's done a tremendous number of hours with me and my coworkers, probably close to 1,000 hours over the last two years. I mean, that's just how dedicated he is. And he applied for a scholarship, a nationwide scholarship called the Jack Kramer Scholarship. And there was over 100 applicants, and there are criteria that you have to meet. And some of the criteria, you have to have a 3.0. You have to have over 200 hours of observation in a secondary school athletic training setting. You have to be sponsored by an athletic trainer who was made. Applied to a university offering an athletic training education program, providing eligibility to sit for the exam, and have established his or her intention to continue academic work in athletic training at the baccalaureate level. So what, this is the letter I received, and I wanted to share with you guys, because this is the type of student that I've had the pleasure of working with, and it's just the type, indicative of the type of people we have. It says, "On behalf of NATA District 2 Director," which NATA District 2 is Pennsylvania, New Jersey, New York, and Delaware. "I want to let you know and congratulate all of you on the accomplishments of one of your athletic training student aides. Ryan Satier has been named as a District 2 finalist for the 2013 Jack Kramer Scholarship," meaning he's in the top 10. "District 2 is home to some of the finest secondary school students in the nation. I'm delighted that out of all of these, Ryan was chosen to represent us at the national level for this scholarship competition. It is additionally impressive that this is your program's second finalist in the last five years. Ultimately, the scholarship was awarded to another worthy finalist. Please know how proud District 2 is of Ryan and all of you. Competition is tough, and off of this, recognition is quite an honor. Kudos to your entire athletic training program for having people like this involved. Congratulations to Ryan for being chosen as a finalist for District 2. Thanks, Ryan, for everything you do."
Thank you, Senator.
I just think it's awesome, you know, to have a nationwide scholarship applicant right here in our midst. He's just, that's all he does. I mean, he took time off to come to this because he's working the musical. I mean, he's just, he's here, I think he might be here more than I am. I don't know.
Ryan was our Student of the Month a few months ago, so we introduced him to you all then, and, you know, Mr. Cooper and his program is outstanding, one of the best in the state, probably the country, and we have, he does a great job with these kids, and Ryan's a fine example of what happens here at Penn Trafford. That kid right there, it's unbelievable the things he does. He's involved with our Community Action Program and the athletic trainers, and the musical is running around. He's just a great kid, so we're very proud.
You're going to hear about him in a few years. Seriously, a lot more good things coming our way.
I know Ryan, because he was very young, right, guys?
Right.
And he is, we have been delighted watching you, and actually, your other brothers grow up. But he's always kept us on our toes. He's always, he's always got a joke.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
The next item on the information list is...
Brett will take over. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jared Ewing. Jared is a partner with Sarper Company. He and his associate, Max Fontaine, who did most of the field work, are going to deliver the audit reports for the 2012 mystery year.
Hi, thank you very much. Let us do a service to you. Ax has promised the audit report. I'll let him pass them out to you. What you want to do is basically turn the last two pages, okay? It's called a schedule fund with a question card. This is basically some of the audit, okay? Types of opinions we've answered, kind of findings, and the submission of signatures and so forth. We issued an unqualified auditor's opinion, which is the audit opinion of course, setting that there's nothing funny in here. We're not reporting fixed assets, you know, using the wrong basis of accounting or anything like that. We qualify them to an attorney, and just to congratulate them. We also have to report an internal control of our financial reporting with regards to compliance, and also with regard to your federal boards, your internal controls over the programs themselves by any compliance that may be taken. And I'm happy to say that we do not have any material weaknesses or an unaccording commitment of processes when you look through the audit. On the last page, you will see a finding. It's just a finding that's required to be reported to be a federal fund. We do not consider it to be, it's basically just a way the federal funds are reported. We're working with the district. We're going to go back and fix 2010 and 2011. It's really not that big a deal, but it has to be reported for the sake of audit purposes, okay? So I won't get, I won't worry too much about it, okay? The terminology makes it sound a little scary, but what it is, okay? You also have a letter. It's a letter to those charged with governance. These are the items that we're required to make the board aware of, our responsibilities, what management's responsibilities are, and what your responsibilities are with regards to financial reporting process for the district. I'll let you read through that. Significant accounting policies are on page 19 of the audit report. We didn't have any changes this year to the reports basically that you saw last year, okay? We do make audit adjustments. We come in during the year, and I'll make this, and the funding that we have to approve for year end. Management's made all the adjustments. We don't consider any of those adjustments to be a material weakness for years, okay? The last few pages of this letter is what I really want to make you aware of. These are future accounting and auditing issues. These are standards that are going to affect the 12, 13 year. This report will look different next year, our audit opinion. They're going to refer to it as an opinion letter instead of an audit report. They're changing some of the terminology with prepaid expenses, if you're familiar with that. That's all going to go into effect next year. That's where you'll see changes. Also, the engagement letter terminology is going to change. They're trying to bring management, the board, and the auditors all together with who's responsible for what portions of the audit, just to help us all work a little bit better together. But if you want any more information on those, feel free, contact us. We'll be glad to explain a little bit more detail or give you more information, too. If you have any other questions regarding the audit, that'd be answered for you. If you'd like, you can always call me in the office.
Questions immediately? Okay, I also would like to recognize again Mr. Benton and the Students of the Video Club for being here. This is a sacrifice. I'm not too sure, but I'm thinking on a night like tonight, if I'm in high school, that I'd probably want to be anywhere but at a school board meeting. So we really appreciate your attendance here, because this is a very valuable service to the community. So thank you once again. Thank you, Mr. Benton. Also, I want to bring your attention to tab 3 in your board book. There is a thank you note from the Trafford Rec Board thanking the district for the use of the middle school for the auction. Of course, that's Mr. Petrusi. Finally, a quick update on the budget. We will have a budget presentation for you in May. Right now, we've had numerous retirements, and right now, we will not be replacing seven retirements out of the nine that we've received, and that is a savings of well over $700,000 for the next budget year, which is, goes a very, very long way to helping our budget. As a matter of fact, we are well beneath any...
The index.
The index for any increase, and I don't anticipate any problems. So again, once again, we've really, we've been very frugal, not replacing seven professional staff, that's a significant amount. We can do that without affecting the education program of the students. But that's just a quick update where we are with the budget, and as you know, the budget, 75% of it is payroll and benefits, so that's why I bring this up at this point. So that's the budget, and that's everything that I have for information, Dr. Trey. Thank you, Dr. Butler. We're into recognition of visitors, and we have no one signed up for this evening, so we'll begin to move on with the additional motions. This time, they have a motion to approve the treasurer's report, the high school extracurricular activity fund report. The motion.
Second by Phil. Second by Nick.
Question? Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of April? Second.
It was a no motion by Nick. It was a second? Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried. Executive session, we will not need an executive session. We apologize for being four minutes late. We were involved in a few items related to personnel and also contract negotiations. We can move into new business, athletics and extracurricular. Mrs. Sissin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items. Move to employ the following athletic personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Andy Rosardi, head golf coach.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following volunteer coaches. All coaching volunteers must have Act 31, 151, and 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Ross Bratton, volunteer JV varsity football coach. Amber Dewarick, volunteer pole vaulter coach at Penn Middle and Trafford Middle for the 2013 track and field season.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Budget and finance, Mr. Chassik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the expenditures for the month of March 2013 submitted by Access of Architecture for the high school renovation project in the amount of $76,666, according to the schedule.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move toward the following bid in accordance with the joint purchasing agreement with the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Number 7 Joint Purchasing Consortium for the 2013-14 school year to the company with the lowest bid where specifications were met. Copy of the individual warrant will be filed in district's business office as listed below.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept and approve the audit financial statements in single audit for the Penn Trafford School District for the 2011-2012 school year, as submitted by Sarper Company Certified Public Accountants. A copy of the audit will be filed in the business office.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That is all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chasic. Buildings and grounds and safety, Mr. Leonard, and welcome back, by the way.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. It's good to be back, and I do have three items tonight. I'd like to make a motion to hereby designate the press box at Warrior Stadium as the Patrick Kelly Press Box in honor of his services as athletic director, coach, and volunteer for the Penn Trafford School District in accordance with the district's naming rights policy.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried. At this time, in breaking protocol, we have members of the Kelly family here, and we'd ask them if they would like to address the audience in front of this. Are you up for this?
I don't know.
That's understandable.
I wish I could, but I can't. Thank you so much.
Dad was a great man.
He served the district well. He ended retirement, he still served the district very well. Be proud.
Sorry, everyone. Normally, I love to talk. I can't do it. Thank you.
Okay, next, I'd like to move to employ the following custodian to be summoned by the administration effective Tuesday, April ninth, 2013. Compensation will be at the rate of $14.60 per hour, with fringe benefits provided according to the negotiated agreement. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of the Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. That custodian would be David Schoenfield. Needs to be a custodian at the Trafford Middle School.
Second.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
And thirdly, I'd like to move to authorize the administration to advertise for bids for the Harrison Park Elementary School roof renovation.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Leonard. We could go to employee relations, negotiations, transportation, Mr. Stovall.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Food service, Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to renew the contract with Aramark for the 2013-14 school year.
Second.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrusi.
Famous President. Move to put the additional substitute teachers and support personnel for the month of April 2013.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to the following retirement resignations. Darlene Harholtz, kindergarten teacher at McCollum Elementary School, effective June fifteenth, 2013. James Kels, Magnus Garage, effective June twenty-eighth, 2013.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to grant Chrissy Giobanati, great name, a compensated professional leave beginning August twenty, 2013 to January second, 2014, for professional development in accordance with a written request, Section 1166 of the School Laws of Pennsylvania and District Policy. While compensated professionally, Ms. Giobanati will not earn sick leave or personal debt.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to put the conference request for the following employees to attend a summit of empowering the customized learning community from June twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth to 2013 in a beautiful part of the country, Black Hills, South Dakota, at a cost of $4,464 for the district. Dr. Butler, Mr. Schwartz, Ms. Lance, and Ms. Valia.
Second.
Sorry.
Second by Bruce.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize the administration to request three eight-hour days and one two-hour early dismissal day for Department of Education under Act eighty for the 2013-14 school year. Release time will be used for teacher in service, parent conferences, curriculum development, and long-range plan activities.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
So, aye, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Policy, public relations, legislative title two, Mr. Noel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept the final minutes of Superintendent's Information Committee meeting held on Monday, March fourth, 2013.
Second.
I think I didn't catch who that was.
Rich.
Rich, sorry. Second by Rich.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve Pennsylvania Department of Education resolution to authorize Dr. Thomas Butler to use an electronic signature on grant agreements for submission to PDE via the eGrant system. Copy of this resolution will be included with the official minutes of this meeting.
I think Dallas seconded that.
You got it. We have a question?
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve Resolution Number 4813-A urging increasing state funding for school construction and renovation projects. Copy of this resolution will be included with official minutes of this meeting. It's in your appendix, Steve, if you have.
Second.
Second.
Question.
Second by Phil.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve Resolution Number 4813-B calling for the reform of Commonwealth Cyber Charter school funding formula. Copy of this resolution will be included with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Phil.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve Resolution Number 4813-C urging pension reform. Copy of this resolution will be included with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second by Scott.
Question. Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Taxes, insurance, and census, Mr. Stovall.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Solicitors' report, Mr. Russell Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have submitted to the board members a written report detailing our firm's activities over the past thirty days. If anyone should, if you and report have any questions, please feel free to direct us to our office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. PTA Representative, Mr. Sean Rehner.
Quick question. Being that our staff will be, teaching staff will be reduced, probably in the last six years, we lost about fifteen percent of our staff. I just wanna know if the enrollment has kept pace pretty much the same way the teaching staff has decreased. I'm assuming it's probably close.
It's almost a one for one.
It is. Almost identical.
My one question. I wish I was here for Ms. Ward last week. Long notice that lines. I have an additional question since he asked that question. We've had declining enrollment documented for how many years now?
Eight, nine.
Nine running years.
Since 2003, 2004.
And projected to be how many more?
Well, it depends on, there's a statewide perception, which has us down in the thirty-four, thirty-five hundred, but that's upgraded and improved. Dr. Butler may have that, but then you have to look at simple math, what we have coming in and what we're going out. We're closer to two fifty, two seventy-five in a class, and we're graduating over three hundred. So, you know, it's hard to tell, you know? There's nothing exciting about developing the area, and we're faced with a long-term problem, despite the quality of our school system.
That's why I thought it was important to note that this hasn't been effort on the board. The board has scrutinized this very heavily. We ponder every decision. It's not been taken lightly, and we've done everything we could to keep the intact all the programs we have, staffing levels in line with student, so that's not been put by the wayside.
Follow-up question. How does this year's graduating senior class compare to what's anticipated for our incoming kindergarten class?
Our kindergarten class right now is the lowest, correct, Matt? The lowest it's been. It's in two twenty-five.
Really? Two twenty-five, and then what is the graduating class this year?
We're about three fifty, three fifty.
So, that's a down of one hundred and twenty-five.
We'll get some more in that kindergarten, but it's gonna be in the two seventy-five range with offset.
Oh, you think it'll be that high?
Two fifty to two seventy-five.
A lot of the kindergarten centers is all day kindergarten, something like that.
Oh, okay. All right.
Any other questions related to Mr. Rehner's question? You stimulated a lot of thought there.
It was a good question.
Just mentioned.
I got all meeting to think of things.
At this time, this time, we're ready to, I believe, we're ready to adjourn. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. And seconded, and the meeting is adjourned at seven forty-four. Thank you very much for attending.